...allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence to honor those members, men and women of our armed services serving here and abroad. Hand over heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
You seated? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the July 17th Village of Woodbury Planning Board Meeting. Has the board had an opportunity to review the minutes from the June 19, 2019 meeting?
Yes.
Can I get a motion and a second to accept the minutes as posted?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
So passed. Please, please I didn't forget it this time. Okay. First item on the agenda tonight, Woodville Heights, 39M LLC. Review and discuss site plan submitted for proposed 13-lot subdivision. Said property is located on Hill Avenue in Highland Mills. It is known as the Village of Woodbury. Tax maps is section 204, block 1, lot 34 dot 2. Look at you guys, all ready to go. How are you this evening?
... Board members, Jane Myer, St. Peter, Richard Rowe, anything?
Sounded like you were.
Good. Okay. So, you haven't seen us in a while.
Yes.
We referred to the zoning code of appeals for area variances quite a while ago. Ultimately, the variances were granted. It allows us, variance has allowed us to come back in with this 13-lot right now. So, I'm here with John Mock. He was our project engineer. I understand there was some comments generated. I haven't seen anything for this meeting. So, this is really the first time we've been back in, it's gotten a bit used in years. So, I'm assuming we're all just getting ready to leave the project. We'll give the list. I think John has seen, I think Dennis generated the type letter and we're here to his pleasure.
Okay. One thing, just before I forget, we did not actually get an application. We got the escrow, we got maps, but we did not get a new application.
There is no new application. This is a continuation.
Okay. My understanding it was a new set of plans from the original subdivision request.
We had 13-lot project planned, I think in front of you. That's what Dr. Fehr. There's a net debt that was issued years ago. We received it from the ZBA with that net debt. So, this is not a new application. This, we're just here to count to two after we've gotten our regular reviews.
Okay.
The way that we're advising the board to proceed on this one is that it's an amended application. So, the amended application would require a new application, but it also requires a freshwater wetlands permit. So, it'd be good if that application came in at the same time because as this board knows, those applications also require public hearings.
Yes.
So, try and have them all together, as well as an EAF for this project.
I knew it wasn't completely crazy.
I'm not trying to go crazy.
So, you need a new application form, a regular application form, which loaded as an amended application?
Yes.
Okay. And John will go up with this plan? Okay.
And I think they have an application form for that. If they don't, let me know and I can send you one.
Okay. So, I'll contact Maria?
Maria.
And she'll know if that makes any difference.
I will let her know and yes, she will.
Excellent.
Okay.
I hate to put you on the spot, Dennis, but for some of us that haven't been here for so long, could you maybe just give us a synopsis of the project from where we were to where we are to...
Okay. Well, this application was reviewed, originally filed in 1989. And at that time, it was a 15-lot. There was a GML referral. There was a public hearing that was opened and held in 1994. You had a negative declaration and you granted, this board granted preliminary approval in 1995. Plans were subsequently revised. There were numerous extensions from 95 to 2019. And then, there was a request, I think, for us to take a look at this and see if there had been any changes to the code and to your land area definitions. We did that. And with that, there were some further modifications and they went to the ZBA to try to receive approval for some variances. They were denied. They sought relief. They did get relief from the courts and the ZBA granted the variance because of the remand of the court. And now, they're back before you for a 13-lot subdivision. It has changed in terms of stormwater requirements. The roadway swings from Hill Avenue around and the inner lots haven't really changed, but the exterior lots have been changed. They have provided an area that is now designated for their stormwater management and they have made certain changes to the lot configuration. I think the roadway stays basically the same. A lot of the infrastructure stays similar to what was previously approved, but there are a number of things that need to be reviewed in terms of the new layout and the new configuration. Also, in our new regulations under MS4 and our stormwater regulations, there are new requirements for the applicant. And that was probably the biggest thing that needs to be, the hole that needs to be filled before this is ready for the board and for a public hearing.
Thank you, Dennis. Kelly, is this going to need a new GML 239?
Yes, it should. So, just so that I can update the board, it was referred, but that referral occurred back in 1995.
Right.
So, back in 1995, it came back as a local determination, but what I had noted in my notes for this particular application is that for consistency, it should be referred again. It'll likely come back as the same thing, but since the application requires a public hearing, there's plenty of time for that to occur.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do you guys want to talk a little about what's changed and, or do you want to go over the comments from our engineer? Or are you okay with whatever?
I can address it very briefly. I've gotten the comments from your engineer, I just received things, I've also received comments from the planner. I don't have issues with, I think 99% of what's there is vitually, the checklist of things we have to address on this. There are one or two issues that I need your engineer to discuss in more detail, such as how we're going to make certain things work with the scoreboard. Because we do have an issue where we have water coming in from off-site, there is issues of what you have to do for the ground to be, and hanging in. Do you want to get something real, easy to maintain and the same with the walls and what are called...
Okay. Mike, I have a question for either, I guess it's either Dennis or Stu. I had a conversation today with the superintendent of wastewater and water for the village, and he says that we don't have sewer or water capacity in that area to service a new subdivision. He also has not received a updated drawing.
Okay. Yeah. I will have to talk to the water and sewer superintendent. We do have some issue in terms of sanitary sewer at some of our pump stations under wet weather flows. Generally, we have the capacity in our collection system to convey, to accept and convey this level of wastewater, but we do have conditions that occur during wet weather flow. We have had agreements with applicants to offset that by contributions to remove infiltration inflow. That may be one remedy. I'll have to take, talk to him about that. And as far as water supply, we are continuing to look for water supply. We have water to meet our everyday needs and even our peak days, but it requires that all the wells be functioning. Health Department regulations require that you take the largest well out of service and you have to be able to meet the maximum day. We're stressed under those circumstances right now. The village is attempting to obtain additional water supplies. And I'll talk to him about that further and we'll get some kind of report from water and sewer.
He did make a suggestion that potentially the applicants, you and I and maybe the mayor get together and have a meeting, discuss this application, their requirements, and then what would be needed to get them connected into our infrastructure.
Okay.
If it went possible.
Mrs. Chairman, there is one question I have for the applicant. If I could, it'll help us in the review. Is there any intent for an HOA here or is, are all the improvements to be dedicated to municipality or...
I believe there, this would not require an HOA. I believe road system should basically, I assume the stormwater facilities would be privately owned, but judging by what I'm experiencing...
If you could consider that. Water and sewer, I assume would be dedicated to municipality. I assume perhaps the road as well. I wasn't sure about the stormwater facilities.
I have, I'll be honest with you, I haven't looked to see how they're designed right now. If they can't be accommodated privately, my guess is we could have...
Okay.
Dennis, Stu, you guys have any one questions for the applicant?
Not really. John acknowledged that we had done a memo and I think Kelly had clarified the status of the application. Just clarify the status. And as Dennis went through the history, this has had a long history. The road system really hasn't changed. There are issues with the layout in a sense. You were dealing with a flat piece of land or a new piece of land, but the road system is what it is. It's confined by the surrounding uses and the surrounding roads. There's, there's that one offset where I think, in fact, I think it's been suggested that we make sure in the final designs, there are stop signs and so on that will make it safe. And the only other thing, the new thing in the memo that we had submitted earlier was that as the application proceeds, there are requirements for final, for a final site, a final subdivision, and we just laid out the requirements, but John knows those.
Do any members of the board have questions to the applicant?
A question for Dennis.
Okay. Or...
Dennis, on your memo on page four, you mentioned about a chemical feed system and you weren't certain what the purpose of it was. What is it in relation to? Is it water or generator?
I think that chemical feed system was in connection with your wastewater treatment or, yeah, there's a wastewater station there and there was a chemical treatment. Sometimes, if you anticipate, I'm not sure, I don't want to presume, but sometimes if wastewater is held for a long time, there can be odors associated with it and we use hydrogen peroxide or sodium chloride or something to combat that. I think that this may be a carryover from another one because there shouldn't be a long detention time in this system at all. And so, I'd be surprised if it's required. That was the nature of the question, finding out exactly what they're proposing and whether it would be relevant in this instance.
Has that been used in any area around here? Any development?
Oh, yes. A number of our pump stations, we have treatment systems. It's not sodium perchloride. It escapes you now the chemical we're using, but it knocks down some of the odor in the system. And so, but those are long detention times in the collection system to get to the pump station. And the sulfites can come out of the wastewater and create odors, so that's why we do it in those stations. In a system this small and short conveyance time, I wouldn't expect to have those problems.
Okay. Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah. I have a question about the stormwater, the pre and post. You're concerned about somebody else's runoff on your site?
It's, we already have, when site has, when the land is shaped, we have a fair amount of water outside areas flowing inside and pass through. And the issue becomes, besides dealing with the total quantities of things, there are mechanisms by which you try to treat water that comes off of like the roadways, things that are developed. So, to some extent, what you have to do is you have to come up with a system that allows a certain amount to just flow through untreated because it's coming in from off-site, but at the same time, capture what you have on-site rather than the appropriate treatment mechanisms. Either way, you still end up with debt where your post is not going to exceed its current conditions. But there's a number of different ways you can separate this and different people have different opinions as to what the best way is and how you want to do it. I'd like to work with your engineer a little bit, make sure that we're on the same page for how we do this.
All right. I just wanted to be sure that the pre and post were going to be aligned and you weren't going to let the neighbors just flow past your property onto the next property. It's got to be the same after it's developed.
There's going to be things done so that basically if you're not leaving our site, it's going to be...
Less than what's there now.
Less than what is coming in.
Generally, under small storm events, there's an opportunity to actually reduce the water that goes off because the volume is designed for a much larger storm. But the answer is that it shouldn't exceed or should be less than is the intent of the design.
Anything else to tell you?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Any?
Okay. Dennis, I just want to confirm a couple of things on your memo. On the first page, your footnote number three. Kelly?
Yes. So, the ZBA did grant a variance. There's a couple of things with that. The first is that it says it expires 90 days from the decision, which means it's already expired. There really was, I don't think any subdivision project has ever made it through this board in 90 days, but it also says that the variances are not effective until the SWIP is approved by the town engineer. So, arguably, the variances aren't even effective yet to start that clock because the SWIP has not been submitted, let alone approved. I did make a note actually before you raised this to reach out to the ZBA's attorney to talk to him about this so that maybe we can have that clarified so that there aren't those conflicting dates. But I don't see a problem with this board moving forward.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure on that. Sure.
We see any error within 90 days, ZBA within 90 days to get an extension. And I think at that meeting, we replaced the NPA agenda because they changed their rules. They amended the rules by resolution, I believe, to where if you have a pending thing, I'll correct it, if you require waiting for approval based on the content of the variance, your time doesn't start to run until after you get a, get an approval or denied on your application for playing. So, I was told, we don't have to go back until...
New rule.
Doesn't say that.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, the variance itself doesn't say that, but if those are the new rules, I think we can have that, I'm comfortable with that.
That was one of Mr. Donnelly's last acts.
Oh, okay. Well, I can't reach out to Mr. Donnelly, but I will reach out to Mr. Dickover and just make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that it's all...
Yeah. I was aware of that. Thank you.
Any else?
Yeah. And just one other, it's on page three. The second part of one, or C1B for the bulk area and the placement of those houses. So, I'm sure this, by what Dennis had said, those, the way the houses are placed on there right now are just placeholders. There's not going to be any encroachment and it'll all be in the memo.
We're showing the house location, and that will get the following as we build.
Okay.
If we have to move some people, that's just for...
Okay.
By example.
We're showing a generic house.
Right.
And honestly, one of the things we tried to do was to try and minimize the amount of disturbance. We showed the house usually as close to the road as we can be private. Shorter driveway, let's say we're disturbed around the site. So, that was still a bit bad.
Yeah. I mean, as it moves on, it'll be defined and there won't be encroachment on the side yards or anything as he indicated could be.
The way, the way the board has treated this in the past is, this is a site plan, all right? So, if you show a box like that, that's basically a house. What they have done is they have said in the past, and it's up to the discretion of the board, if they want to allow you five feet or 10 feet in any direction from that box to extend a porch, then the garage, that's permissible without having to come back to the board. But in no way can it encroach into a side yard, rear yard, or front yard. Right now, some of those boxes appear to just encroach a little bit into a side yard. So, I think if you do what we suggested...
Okay.
Right. Just show the side yards, rear yards, put it in there. You can put a note down if you wish that they'll be placed there with, except they may move so many feet and then the board can decide whether they think that's reasonable and we'll proceed from there.
And that would be a condition of the resolution of the site plan approval, correct?
Uh, yes.
Allowing that wiggle room?
If they put it on the plan as a note and you approve the plan, same thing.
Okay. Very good.
That's it.
Let me tell you, we stay 15 minutes of meetings just with microphones.
Yeah. Just a question for Dennis. Again, just referencing his memo of June 27th. On the first page, third paragraph, you said here, "We note that no ARB application has been submitted. This is typically not required for the current view, but it was required prior to building permits." But again, we're going to see that before the building permits, right?
Yes. And it's a function, it's a board authority. So, they have to come in. The applicant, if they don't have the full designs right now, it's not unusual for them to obtain a site plan, subdivision, file that, and then later, when they might have a developer, they could sell it to a developer, someone could come in then, but before any building permit gets issued, ARB approval is required of the board.
Okay. And then, along with that, at what point during the process do we see the actual site?
...of the home in terms of square feet?
Generally, that's in ARB. If you thought it was relevant to your site plan review, you could ask them for information. Typically, you'll, you'll get something in terms of number of bedrooms because that affects wastewater, water consumption, your EAF and that sort of thing. So, it's not unusual to request that kind of information. But generally, when we see actual square footages is when you get an ARB application.
Also, the applicant will be obligated, I think we both, both made the point, obligated under the ridge preservation section of the code to submit under that code, under that section.
All right. So, just getting back what you said a moment again about certain lots and encroachment, I think it's good to get an early sense how large these homes will be because if they are large, it could affect the encroachment on the setbacks. This way, we don't have to go through this twice. You know, just my opinion.
It should not affect setbacks. It should, the, if you put a house that could, that cover the entire buildable area, it would be an enormous house, all right? So, I think that the question that you raised is relevant. You can put a restriction that they can't go into the yard areas, but that would not satisfy your question regarding the size of the homes. If you're interested in that, then I think the applicant can provide some, kind of maximum minimum range on the homes that they're proposing and then other bedrooms.
Yeah. Like, yeah, before we go too far down the road, at some point, maybe the next, within the next two meetings on this. And then, a question on the map. This map that's dated April 3rd, is this the one that went before the ZBA or was there a different map?
That I don't know.
We had a map. I can't tell you whether it's the same, but it's not the same and it still implies. The road system didn't change, I can tell you that.
The maps you presented to the ZBA were in some ways a lot simpler. We're trying to show things like how we do sewer, etc. This is a plan that we develop after, after the business of ZBA, put the line up, lot lines.
Lot lines are right.
And carry a couple of...
Question I have for Dennis on the, why does he pull that out? I'm on the second page of the maps. Between lot two and three, there is a lot, but it's not identified specifically what it is. Could you just briefly explain that area between...
That's the designated stormwater management area. They intend to put stormwater management in there and I think the pump station is also tucked in the corner there.
So, they can just make note of that?
It's a utility line.
Okay. And then, looking at it, that's the lowest point.
Makes sense. It's where the water goes.
Yeah. Seven sixty-six. And you know there's a stream that goes down to a pond.
Yes.
So, I just want to make sure it's highlighted correctly, identified correctly and I know we're going to get more details on that forthcoming.
Okay.
So, okay.
Sorry. We're about to beat each other in the head if we try to all... Okay. Got your questions?
Yeah.
All right. I don't have any at this time. So, looks like you guys got a little bit of homework before you come back to us. Small request, if the next submitted plans, could you do the smaller size, 11 by... Yeah.
You want a full-size plus in there?
Well, just five, instead of, you know, the 15 sets that you normally do in the full size, just five of those sets for the board.
Five full-size and then...
Well, you need 10 full-size.
Well, we should clarify this because this has happened in the past because I'll need a full-size set. I can't do my review at the small size.
Right.
I usually make my own print, the smaller one. But if all the board wants reduced-size plans, then we should let them know that now. It reduces printing costs. It also, if it's satisfactory for you, it's a lot better for the billing department as well. So, if all the board's comfortable with that, we'll tell the billing department that's all they need to distribute.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
How about a PDF version of everything?
Which we did. We asked...
Yeah. That I can forward to...
So, you can break it down any size you want. Next up, boards out here in front of, to figure out what happens.
Yeah, we haven't, we're still catching up. We're in like the 90s. We haven't quite hit the 2000 yet.
We got the 95 recently.
I think you talked to Maria. The board wants reduced-size prints. The consultants need full-size plans. Okay. And she has extra copies. One is probably for her, the others may be for the fire department. So, you'll have to check with Maria, but the five board members want reduced sets.
Makes it easier for us to travel back and forth.
So, I'll try and...
Sorry. Did you make it that complicated?
That's good. I know where you're moving this is. I can't wait before the meeting starts, I'll check to see if I have these or not. Other places I go now, I've got them up on screen.
We're working on it. We're working on it. We'll get to the 2000 soon.
We can do that.
All right. So, you got, you're clear on what you need before you reappear?
I'll work with that. I assume, gentlemen...
Reach out.
Dennis, you fill it in when we speak.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time tonight, gentlemen. See you guys soon. Okay. Next on the agenda, Hartman ARB review application received for ARB review of a single-family dwelling within development known as Woodbury Villas. Said property is located at seven Allegheny Cross and is known on the Village of Woodbury Act V, section 255, block 1, lot 7. Evening, sir. If you could just state your name for the record and a little bit of overview of the project, please.
My name is Clay Hartman. I'm providing the email, Hartman.
Good evening.
The project is located in the construction area and we're here to take care of the single-family wall. It's a part of which...
Reprovision.
This is the model. Basically, this is the model we're presenting. Initially, we plan to go, we plan to do one of these original models, but all those models are basically, not all, from a portion of the locals and there's no split level. We want to arrange a split level, like a little split. Also, we have a lot of flaws, a lot of organifying, so we did the design. With the design fitting, it should, it should be similar to what's there, should stand out. So, that it was normal. We have this secret area, a little attic, so it should stand out, sharing with the people. First, holes. So, there was a hole which was, which was used multiple times. The white windows is of eight, nine, seven, twelve, seventeen windows. And we see enough of the past minutes that it goes up on the top of the block. So, they want to suck it out as a feature. As far as the site, this is located in... As far as the site, this is located off all streets, street. As far as visual, the site is basically, it's on the front, that's what we visible. One of the reasons, both the laces, is this tree is from our original street up there that still has actual trees, original trees. So, and we spoke all, the two sides, neighbors, they both really have been rising up, we did a ten feet, we called eight feet, that's what we have for the sides.
Okay.
So, you have some visual barrier inside, and in the rear, there's the forever, basically, designated to be what it's for.
Right, the open, you back up to the open space.
So there's no visual, it's not like, so those visuals on the front, so we put a lot of entrances. The front should stand out, which would, we tried, it's like a single-family ranch, attached garage. So basically, this is where the living area is, but the sleeping area originally over there, right? So we brought down the hatchway all the way to the first floor, in order to have that door, and should have a little bit more. So you get a feel, it's a single-family, no, an attached garage, and those doors on top, for the sleeping area.
Okay, before I, thank you, sir. You want, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything, okay. We'll start off with, I guess Dennis, if you want to go over your.
Your authority for the review of this application is under ridge preservation in the code and as well as architectural review board. Some of the provisions and requirements of the criteria for review overlap. But nevertheless, as far as ridge preservation, this property is supposed to sit into the ridge, you're supposed to look at how it sits in the area. They have given you a photo rendering, and it's only the front, so it shows you how it appears from the front of the street. The question is, I don't know if that's representative of the area or symbolic of how it would appear, or that the house appears, and then just a green background. If that's the topography, if it's set into a photo that actually represents the photography or not, I'm just not sure. It may in fact be that.
In fact, the topo is exactly the way it's supposed to be, side line. I did attach a side line with the actual topo. So just so it doesn't look distinctly neither of the home, just basically stays the same, the same photo, just like the photos that were done, so all of this one, those are crazy, so the house was a little bit long, so I brought up a little bit. And most of the houses over there do not have stairs, like they have five stairs, they just have two, three stairs, but therefore, we brought it down, not having stairs, just the, the front porch, it's over there around already, but that's only, one of the main reasons, with the topo, is also because of the trees. If you move any topo, it definitely will increase in kind of, but it can, so. And in fact, we did provide two of the elevations, three of the elevations, and it has the history of the roof. So, to be the address from, and it's exactly the way it is, and I have to make sure, kind of modify it to work exactly to the same original files.
Okay, so if that's a photo that represents how the, the building would set in the surroundings, that is one of your obligations under the code, to make sure that it's, it sets in, into the area in an appropriate fashion. As far as the billing design, the structure shape, and the context setting is something that you would be reviewing to make sure that it fits. Earth tone colors are required, they've provided you with some information on what, what the colors are going to be and on the roof material. The billing of structures is supposed to fit within the topography below the tree lot. They're intending to maintain some of the trees, but obviously, some of the front area along the road have been cut back. The lot appears to be heavily wooded in the rear area, and a significant portion of the rear lot could be preserved, and I think the applicant's intent is to preserve some of that area as far as the wooded nature. I'll jump to another subject that we have down in ARB, and that is on stone walls. There was a stone wall, it looks like it extended through the property, some of it has been removed due to, I guess, the road construction and grading in that area. There is a wall in the back that continues on back through the woods. If that's still preserved, it's on the survey, but if it's still preserved there, there is a requirement that the board had in the WP3 original action, saying to preserve those where they could be preserved. You might want to talk to the applicant about that, as to whether it can be preserved in connection with their intended development plans, and if so, you may want to include a condition on that. Use of deciduous trees, evergreen trees to supplement natural vegetation, that's something you need to consider. I'll defer to Stu on that, whether anything is required here. As far as ARB, building height is a requirement, maximum is thirty-five feet. I think the drawings are the scale, but the way that you interpret height depends on the roof, and this is a complicated roof design. So I think that we should get some information on the roof height in accordance with the code, just make sure it's complying. That would be for the board's information. If an application were to be submitted to the building department that did not comply with the height requirement, regardless of the action taken by the board, it would not be approved by the building department. As far as elevations, you have architectural views on all sides of the structure, and you have the one view in the front that shows you how it sits in the setting from the photo rendering. As far as building size, this is an item that has come up a number of times recent. I noticed in here that in my report, I said, "We attached the summary of the prior approvals," but I'm afraid that I don't know that we did that, so I'll have to give you another one. We have done it previously. Is there one there? Oh, good. Okay, well, didn't get on my copy, so I'm glad I gave you that.
I had to get you my emails to find it. Dennis forgot it, it's okay.
So, the homes that have been approved thus far, the active adult, this is not in the active adult community, were fifteen hundred seventy-four square feet to two thousand one hundred eight square feet. The single-family homes that were approved by the board, non-age restricted, range from one thousand two hundred ninety-eight square feet to three thousand seven hundred square feet. This home is proposed, it's five thousand nine hundred eighty-four square feet, so certainly larger than the homes that have been approved to date. You should consider the home, consider the home size, see whether it fits into the surroundings, that's part of the application under ARB review, consider that. Also, lately, we have started reviewing the cubicle contents, the bulk size of the house, because some applications you received are for homes with large areas of unfinished area, so the square footage doesn't really match up with the size of the structure. Your code requires that you take a look at cubicle content, which means the mass of the structure. So you might want to receive some information from the applicant as to whether all of the areas up above are finished space, and whether the area that they give you for square footage reflects all the space being finished. So that you can determine how that would compare to the other structures that you have reviewed, because those structures, quite frankly, this issue didn't come up then, and those structures were essentially all, all finished space. And you thought you were comparing apples to apples, well, if you're going to do that here, take a look at cubicle content and make sure that it's.
Unit is located?
Kill the battery. The unit is located in the high-end district, and you should consider whether it's appropriate, high-end, that, those are the lots that are largest lots in development. Is there a question coming, or should I continue?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. I talked about the retaining walls, and you should get some feedback from the applicant on the retaining wall, and, well, it's the stone wall that's there. And I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Under ARB, code requires that we look at houses within three hundred feet, correct? For the similarity, similarity?
Correct.
And that, I believe, also under the ARB for the original WP3 approvals, was that any tree, I think it was over four inches in diameter, was not.
I think it was eight inches.
Radius, diameter would be a pretty big tree, wouldn't it? Was not to be removed, or the house is supposed to be situated in such a way that it would not impact those trees. So I think we need to do this, in my mind, there's a little research that needs to be done here with the ARB approvals for WP3, because I know there was definitely some information about the trees and sightline clearings and diameters that couldn't be moved. The stone walls you brought up, so that's something we need to look into as well. And then, just, I checked with the building department when this application came in, and within a three-hundred-foot radius, the smallest house is twenty-three hundred eighty-one square feet. The largest house that has a CO is four thousand eight, four thousand eight hundred ninety-seven feet, and the biggest house out of all of the houses in that development is four thousand nine hundred and twenty square feet, and it's four-bedroom, three-bath, and two-half baths. But I did have the building department pull the square footage of all within three hundred feet of that home. So I think it's something we're going to need to look at, too.
All right, I'll have to update that list, because the two that you mentioned in the high-end square footages, they may have been recent ones that came in, because the range that we had was less than that.
Yeah, we have the sheet, I know we have the sheet that you updated December fifteenth, two thousand seventeen was the last revised date on it.
I think I have another one revised June of twenty, twenty eighteen, I guess? Yeah, and I just gave it to Kelly Rick today.
Okay.
But distribute that one, so I'll take a look at that.
Because there is also a question I posed to Kelly today about, under the cluster conservation, cluster conservation district, the planning board does have the authority to set the largest-sized home that is permitted in that zoning district. We do need to do, and I believe Kelly did not have it any time, because I kind of just sprung it on her, to look into this for us, but we need to do a little research into if that was ever put into, it would either be the final site plan or one of the rumors about.
We did look at the, the final site plan, there were a number clearly of amended resolutions since then, but most of them related to the phasing plan. So for the final site plan, there wasn't a maximum building size, but that does not mean that there wasn't any ARB approvals, because then you had ARB approvals where you approved certain models.
Right.
And those had size limits on them, so I didn't get a chance to chart that one out for you. And I had spoken with Dennis as well, so he provided me some additional information. We were trying to get that together, but we didn't have.
Yeah, sorry, I kind of sprung that, I just.
No, no.
It's one of those things I looked up and I saw, so. Just a lot of information, I'll make copies of everything I got from Maria for the board, and I'll send it out, just as far as what she gave me, as far as those houses in the area. And I also, I believe, under the ARB, that no homes within three hundred feet can use the same color palette on the outside of the house? And how, is that something?
Yes, and I think it refers to similarity. So you could have tones, and if you think the earth tones are satisfactory and they may be similar, but they're not the same, I think that's within discretion of the board. But yes, that's general language. I think we attached the full language from the ARB regulations to the memo.
Okay. Anything else, Dennis, or?
No, that's all I have.
Stu, then, Kelly?
I have a, or ladies first. I just have a short comment, but it's, I think it's important. I don't necessarily think we need to burden this application, but the applicant had mentioned about saving the trees around the house and in the back where they are. And for those of you, I don't know if any of you were here when the WP3 was, yeah, Rich may have been here. WP3 was originally approved, there's an, there's an overall plan that was approved as far as preserving screening, preserving the trees, clearing areas, et cetera, and all the houses that were being built at the time, things have changed, but they were supposed to fit into that or modify it, I mean, there's certain flexibility. That was intended to help with the ridge preservation, to help with the ARB, to make sure that there were screen areas and supplemental planning areas if there were areas that were, in a sense, denuded or cleared trees. Early on, when the development started, and that's why we don't want to necessarily visit everything, but we, we would be, Dennis had mentioned that we could comment on this here. We would go out, and building permits were requested before it actually got into the planning board, to make sure that tree areas weren't cleared, where they weren't supposed to be cleared. Trees were put into the street, along the street line, every requirement, I think, is one every forty feet. So we would be going out and doing that as the development was occurring. It hasn't happened that way in a while, and we're having, now finding that we're, first of all, we don't normally get too involved, our office doesn't get too involved in the ARB, but we haven't been looking at that aspect of it. We really haven't had an opportunity to do, had a request to do that. And so it's, it's a concern, and I'm, in a sense, the applicant has indicated that in this particular lot, they are protecting and preserving the tree line that's there. I don't know if it's, you know, how close it is to the original tree line. But I think it's, I think the reason I'm mentioning it is for the board to be concerned about it, and maybe as we go forward, we need to look closely at, back at that tree clearing plan and the house request, the building permit requests that are coming in, and whether we or someone should be going out there and looking at the condition of the site. That's, that's why I brought it up. I don't necessarily want to burden this applicant or any individual, but I think it's important for any development to be able to, because the board spends a lot of time trying to make sure that they're done correctly, we protect the green areas, the tree areas, et cetera, and you don't want to lose that, the benefits of that review.
And I, and I know there was a provision in the ARB that you, your office or somebody from your office would actually be out there.
That's right.
Would, would, did a set, a very finite period of time to, to mark, to mark those trees as well. So it's not like the applicant would have to wait six weeks for this to happen, it was a very short period of time.
And we worked hard with the building department and the, and the developers, and tried to do that all in a timely way, so they weren't necessarily held up. But at least it, there was an overall plan that was approved, and we were trying to adhere to it.
I'd just like to add to that one quick thing. That's a very good plan, I think the board decided that, just in this particular instance, just to let you know, this roadway in front here was a twelve-foot fill, so there really wasn't any opportunity to save trees, and you had to, you had to grade it back to the lot, so that's why the trees, you know, that's part of why the trees might have been lost here, okay? But the concept of going out to take a look at lots and trying to preserve trees and at least work with the land the best you can, is a very good one that the board had, and it would be well-developed to have Stu's office do that.
Okay. Thank you. Stu, anything else?
That's all, no, that's all I have.
Kelly?
So just so the board knows, this is a type-two action under SECRA. Based on the location of this lot, any referral to the Orange County Planning Department is not required under GML, and as you know, a public hearing is required under the ARB regulations. And that was all I have.
All right, so we could probably declare ourselves an agency on that tonight.
Yeah, no need, you just need to make a motion recognizing that this is a type-two action.
Let me remind me if I forget. Okay. I'm going to start.
Yes. The applicant, can you get us a photographic rendering of the back of the house? I know we have the sketch, it's very involved in the back, and I think would help us to understand better exactly the layout of that. The roof line, the heights of it vary considerably in the back.
Correct. I can do that, basically, anything a little bit different, like the back, is a lot that a lot of people, similar to what's surrounding us, and the back, there's the forever, there's the area, so, but everything that I need, which we know, some, put in the custom home, if a private home, anything that wanted, like a green, or, back, a little bit, everything pushing over there, a lot should be, like, similar, not, not, not.
But it would give us a better idea about the dimensions of this house.
But the, the.
Thank you.
Good. Good.
So we just heard a lot of good stuff from that side. The house seems to be a thousand square feet over what it should be, the neighboring lot, is that what I heard?
Correct. I have a, two, three, four, nine, so it's about bigger, but that house is basically, it's basically colonial, just the fourth, so, and try. colonial, just the fourth, so, and by, um, because of the, the footage, and because it's a, it's a range, which basically uses a lot more footage than having this thing above the, the, because you have to have a lot of corridors, but therefore I'd try to work better with the design. Um, it's too, like, high, the whole set floor, and do things like that, because that's all, um, people, I have seen the number, I've seen the design, so I figured, um, like, there's holes or, behind, also there, in the rear, you can see it, so imagine having that, the front is a lot bigger.
So I think there's a standard, right, that the development had, that the houses should be a certain size and clearing should be a certain way and that kind of thing, that we're checking to see that it meets those standards? That we're, that's our job?
Well, there's a question here about excessive similarity and dissimilarity. The board has approved various models, quite a few, with a wide range of appearances to try to get some, I guess, interest in immunity and that sort of thing, and they fall within a certain range of sizes. I don't think you're limited to a particular size right now. However, if there's something that comes in and you find it too dissimilar, then a part of the code says that that's not what you want, and that you would, you would not authorize that. But it's within the board's discretion now as to whether it's too dissimilar. Take a look at that portion of the code, and I'll get you an updated list so that you can see the range of house sizes that the board has thus far approved.
And previous applicants had a floor plan with the design? Is that something that we have and I didn't see it?
It is something we can ask the applicant if they'd be willing to provide.
Okay.
I mean, I haven't, it's not completely completed, but I didn't prepare until, but I'll get you basically the whole, the sketch.
Okay.
And one last thing, and I'll let somebody else chat. We talked about verifying the sites that were developed, the sites that are developed. I'm unfamiliar with how many sites are available and left in the original subdivision? Is that, is that handy?
I can ask the building department which ones have COs, which ones have billing permits. That'll get you an indication of what's occupied and what is under construction, and then I know the total number. It's 451.
451 was in.
Total lots.
Okay, total lots.
And one was built out before it started, so it's the original lot, so 450 that were to be developed.
We think like 50% of them are built out by now, or 20%?
I'm not gonna guess now. I'd have to take a look. I don't want to guess a number.
All right, so there's still quite a bit of lots left over.
Right, so this.
Oh, yeah.
This is real. Um, the two negative ones, I don't get, um, but it's not, the developer doesn't own the property, so particularly in the high end, it's all, and of, so, one right across, like, an angled right across is the only one that's built, and that was, I mean, within the four months, thread around the street is, uh, on one crack, there's, um, already, um, spots, which means on my left side, not, the left side, probably, the two was not though, but an angled one, so that was.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah. Sixteen, okay.
I know for another home that actually, I guess, we didn't give approval to, but they tweaked their plan and their building permit, I think, what was that, Hudson Point, where, for Pomona?
That's, that's the house.
They didn't get a bill, I don't think they got approval yet, right?
They stepped away.
Yeah.
I didn't think they got their, they didn't get approval, and I don't think they got it.
We didn't give them approval, but they took their plan to Gary, and they got a building permit. The house is almost done, if it's not completely done.
That is 255-3-9. I checked with the building department.
But where I was going with this, for their, for that particular lot, we did a site plan or a site visit, and I think it would be wise if we did one for this as well, because I'm having a hard time picturing where this is gonna be, and I would like to see where it's going to be in relationship to the other homes up there.
Correct. Again, this is not as complicated as it was. That was actually, we held those last road limits, and then it was, this is a lot of different, but, but all of the board belongs to go ahead. It's, it's wooded, so it's kind of hard to see.
That's okay, we've done wooded before.
Yeah.
Just, just to be a little, um, if you look at the wooded area, the first four, you think it's possible, because they built the road. I, about a year and a half ago, before the road was built, basically, we started talking about, out east and back a little bit, so I paid for somebody to locate that lot, because the road here was still a little, the wood area. I marked, had the property line, put all those things, the nut cuts, the nut cut.
Okay.
So if you face the lot from the nut cut, that might be, so the nut cut, filled out of nut cut, so.
Okay, I mean, well, if we do a site plan or a site visit, we would certainly ask the applicant to be there or.
Right, this is around the corner from the one you visited before. It's a little bit to the south, and then you get to the cul-de-sac, or the rotary, and you turn west, and it's on the left side there going.
I could definitely be there if, I'm just going to, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we have, I think we have two options. I'm just trying to, what we've done, what we've also done in the past is we had the corners state of the, of the layout of the home, so that, you know, for those members that are planning board that could not get there, you know, for whatever reason, they were still able to go out there and all they did was, you know, mark the corners of the building with the little red tape, you know, front corner, back corner, you know, middle, just.
The site.
The site, yeah. Just so, you know, you kind of got a visual idea of what the house would look like on the lot, and then it would, I think that's probably, if it's a minimal to you, it's easier for members of the planning board to get out there and kind of take a look at it. Of course, having you there would be the best, because you could walk us through the site.
I would have to, be there, and I'll try to see if somebody.
Could you come up with a date?
Yeah, let's, all right.
Maybe what's the best point of access?
When, when are you typically available?
Um, basically, days, so I'll be there.
Well, I don't know if you go to the city, I don't want it to.
Out in the areas.
Okay.
Days are longer, so.
Yeah, they are, so you do a little bit later at night, do.
Should be before the next meeting, which, now that next month, right? Is that?
Yeah, the next meeting is the 7th. Um, the week of the 29th?
It's fine with me, I'm here. The week of the 29th.
That's fine, but which day?
Well, let's get on a week, and then we'll hone in on, let's, we'll hone in on.
So far, right, yeah.
It works.
Okay. What day works? I'm, I'm good any day, too.
Thursday.
So that would be the first of August.
There you go. Sold.
That's fine.
Okay. What time?
2:35.
What time? I didn't hear you.
2:35.
No, I'm not home.
Um, can we do like 6:37? Would you be home?
6:30, yeah, I'll be home by 6:00.
Can we do 6:30 on August 1st?
That's a lot.
Uh, for a site visit?
Yeah, is that a, is that a Thursday?
Yeah, it's a Thursday.
Yep.
So it doesn't interfere with the front?
Last time?
6:30 PM?
Yeah, that's fine.
If you can leave those marks up until later in the week, I'd be appreciative.
As long as they don't take off. I mean, it was, it was a one-point mark, because once, those signs up, they built the road, basically.
Did what they wanted to do.
And the rear, just, you know, the side, there's a great treatment, they also cut all the trees, and, like.
Dennis, can you?
Uh, Dennis, are you able to make that day, or?
I'm sorry?
Would you be able to make that day, Dennis?
Sure.
Did you?
I was looking forward to it. 6:30, I'll be there. It should be reasonably easy to define due to the stone wall. The stone wall's still there, we can pick a side and get some feel for it from that standpoint, too. So, and the road's there, so we can measure back from the road.
The stone wall, basically, you press 40, 50 feet, they add the road, and it's there.
Right.
And in the back, and in the rear, if you see the side line, that's that range, that's range treatment. So they cut the trees, not in mile, but more, the preservation area, and they moved it over there. So my, what's left is between the 40 feet cut, and where the house is gonna be, so it's not gonna be much too much, but.
Just want to tell you, I have a question. Thank you. I just have one other question. The 5984, is that the footprint, or that's the total square foot footage?
It's the total square foot. So basically, one of the reasons the house has so much footage is, it's a split level. So basically, a typical ranch has a basement, and then a tired floor above. So this is basically split a little bit, so which means half of the house goes up a little bit.
Okay.
So the square footage is a total of the tired floor and this one. What's left is a very small, it's a smaller basement, because this was raised a little bit, so it's not a basement anymore.
Right, so the footprint is smaller than, than the 5984, obviously, okay, that's good.
A floor plan would be helpful.
Yeah, I think it's on my list to ask for. You good, sir?
I just have one request. Since this is, this is WP3, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Could we resurrect the final resolution that the planning board? So we can review, because I'm not sure if I have mine, so we can get a copy before the next meeting, and then the second thing is, this is still an HOA, is that correct?
Yes.
So within, the reason I'm asking for the, the resolution, I'm not sure if there were any conditions that said, as the number of COs get approved, certain amenities had to happen within the WP3. You know, typically, amenities get completed towards the end of.
Unless COs, so it's, it's getting.
There is a requirement. You're absolutely right. On the phase plan, for example.
Yeah.
It lists the number of units that need to be, or the infrastructure that needs to be built after a certain number of units. So some of those were included, the clubhouses, some of them included the light at Dussenberg and Ninninger. There were certain triggers.
Yes.
For those requirements. They're both in the resolution, and many of them are reproduced on the phase plan. We can get your copies.
Yeah, and then if we could just discuss where, I mean, we should be tracking that, because it's, we're a long way off from the last CO, I assume. I mean.
Yeah.
So we should be tracking that, where we are, and who is, who's really responsible.
I think everybody stole my, stole my thunder. All right, so.
This is not part of.
But it doesn't matter.
I thought a lot, a lot of her, um, so, just to be, so, I just don't want to be people, I know if you can read the.
No, no, you're clear here for an ARB, it's just, this ARB brings up some other, I guess, things that were supposed to happen and requirements within that subdivision as when it was planned and signed, and so it's some stuff this board just needs to take back and deal with, work with the building department on its own, like the amenities and stuff, that's not, that's nothing that you're on the hook for. We're here to look at your home, how it fits into the area, the colors, and is it consistent with the neighborhood and all that other fun stuff that was spelled out for you, and that's what we're here to discuss with you and work through that process. So what I have is a request for a photo of the back of the house, the roof line height, because I believe that was missing. If possibly, I think you said you had a sketch of a floor plan?
Yeah.
At some point, before we schedule the public, or when we schedule the public hearing, we're gonna need a color board, which is going to show samples of the siding, the roof, what's the technical term for that thing?
Uh, a color board.
Sample.
Sample board, color board, yeah. So everything that you have listed on your ARB application, we'll need samples just so the public will be able to.
Would this be enough, or you would need a bigger wall?
No, I think we can use chips, right?
No, that's, that's standard. We get that. Sometimes we'll put them on a board, sometimes for, you may know specifically which color you're going to use. There are times when the board grants an array of colors, a palette of colors. There may be 12 colors on 12 different homes. This is a specific home, so if you have a color, the board will want to know the color.
Right, and it's on your ARB, so whatever those colors are.
I think they're actual.
Yeah, then, yeah, we're not like, you need to make like a high school project out of this on HOPE tag and stuff like that, just, just so everybody would have, be able to feel and touch them, is all we're looking for. And then we have a site visit scheduled for August 1st at 6:30 in the evening. I don't think we're at the point yet to schedule a public hearing, I think we're missing too much information, correct?
I think it would be beneficial to get that information.
Yeah, so, once you get all that stuff, we submit it to the building department, they'll let us know that it's all in, and then we'll get you back on the, get you back on the calendar to, you know, any further questions or discussions that come up? Do you have any questions for this board?
No, trust me. So basically, I'll submit the, the sketch, and roof, on the elevation should have the roof height.
Yes.
And this will bring the actual.
Public hearing.
Wait, when you have the, when we, when we schedule the public hearing, you'll need to bring the actual samples, not just.
How does it work if I submit it in the next week, a few days, like at, um, like at the next meeting, or you have to wait?
Um.
Whatever I have to talk to Maria.
I think we'd have to talk to Maria. You're probably not gonna make the next meeting just because of the schedule of the site visit. It won't give everybody enough time to discuss, and we like to have everything in at least 10 days, 10 business days before the next meeting, so our consultants, everything have ample time to look things over. But we will get you on as soon as we, everything is in and taken care of from there. If you have no other, if you're good, no other questions, you're clear what you need to do, I'd like to make an offer, a motion to declare this as a type 2 action under CECA.
A second.
Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, thank you very much, sir. Have a good night. I'll send this to everybody. I had you, I had us, I was starting to ask the questions. Okay. Next up, Homeland Towers, discuss review, site plan submitted for proposed wireless telecommunications facility to include 110-foot monopole with a 2,584-square-foot multi-carrier equipment compound that base said property is located at 11 Ableman's Road in Central Valley and is known in the Village of Liberty, tax perhaps of sections 226 block, 1 lot 38. Applicant.
My name is David Pennen, I'm from the Snyder's Center, here to represent the applicant, Homeland Towers, the application is for a telecommunications facility at 11 Ableman's Road, a telecommunications facility, 110-foot monopole, approximately 2500-foot square foot compound base there, without, uh, located around it. The application has been submitted, there was also a pre-application before this board in early March. We've now submitted in June, fourth, the full application for site plan approval. The application includes not only the art compliance report and our application report, but also included an alternative analysis. So we did locate the facility in the only available property that could also meet the needs to care, care for this facility, Horizon Wireless, by locating the facility where it is, it'll provide the necessary coverage that Horizon's looking to achieve in the area. The 110-foot monopole also provides the talent, village code requirement for the height of the monopole, so it will be code compliant. Also, the facility can locate on the property site that meets all of our setbacks from both the underlying zoning district and the particular setbacks in the village code for a monopole. Essentially, the site will be setback, the height of the monopole from the monopole for all properties. We did submit the residual resource assessment to show the balloon test results, the photo simulations of the facility, and we did receive copies of the consultant's reports from your engineer as well as from Mike Lucio, who's the wireless consultant for the building. I believe most of the items in the consultant's reports are mainly conscious items that we can kind of patch out over the review of the application, most of them we can respond to in our next submission. The main ones being that there are wetlands located near the property, so we will do our best to locate utilities while we already cleared areas, so not disturb the wetlands. However, it could be noted that this is an existing office complex or office building, However, it could be noted that this is an existing office complex or office building, and the area where we're being located is already a paved area, it's already asphalt down on the ground, so it's already disturbed area where we're looking to go. We'll be a little bit off of the disturbed area, and there will be two trees that are being removed as part of the project, but we're doing our best to conserve all the trees that we can. If there are any questions from the engineer regarding the support or the board, I'm here to answer those questions. We'd also like to entertain this, if we have a public hearing, we may have a meeting in August, so we can have the public involved and get their input on this application.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Michael?
Yeah, I could start.
See? We're talking less to my. I'm going to get some wireless mic from now on.
Thank you. Yeah, I could start, give you a little bit of a rundown. I did submit a, just a brief update memo. As I've done with this board prior, I always like to hear a little bit from the applicant. This is the first full submittal. There's been some other application submittals, but this, the submittal that was referenced is the full application in front of you, site plan, special permit. One-hundred-and-ten-foot in an office park zoning district on the other side of the New York State thruway. Just as a point of reference, what's being proposed now, I think is quite similar to an existing cell site, northbound New York State thruway down in Sloughsburg. So just north of the two-eighty-seven eighty-seven confluence. It's not a very tall tower, it is set low to the ground, is this, not up on a ridge, and there's the anchor tenant on top, and then three arrays below. So what we've received and what we're reviewing, and I could also talk to the board and the other consultants on timeline, I think we have a pretty comprehensive application here. We spent some time on the balloon test and the visual, if you remember. I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at the simulations or view shed yet. The applicant does acknowledge that they're, they're looking at a hundred-and-ten-foot height, which is say, what the heck, you know, we're used to a hundred-fifty, a hundred-seventy-foot structures, but they would not require a zoning variance at this point at that height. I think always the balance, however, is Verizon, who's the anchor tenant here, Holland is an infrastructure company, is co-location potential. So this site specifically for Verizon, there's a lot of technical information we're reviewing, we'll be asking for clarifications on. It, it's really more of a offload or capacity situation. There's a little bit of new coverage, but when you look at Woodbury Common, when you look at the New York State thruway, these are intense call and data traffic areas, as we all know. The two sites they refer to, one called Ariman is up on Arden House Road, and the other one they call Woodbury Common is actually the one by the BMW dealership. So Verizon exists on those towers and others, but those two towers in particular are noted to have increased service problems. So part of the due diligence that we'll complete is to talk about capacity, to talk about those cell sites, and probably provide a subset of those color maps that you may have seen in the RF submittal. The visual is another interesting part of this. What's being proposed now on the drawings and in the simulations is a very standard galvanized monopole. We've recently worked, or the last we worked together prior application, and looking at a stealth tree option, and for that particular stealth tree, I think made a lot of sense, this board elected to go with that option. So.
Like, was that the APC?
Yes.
Okay.
APC, which is under construction now, actually, under building permit. So this site is interesting, you do have a couple sites as you drive up the thruway. Cemetery of the Highlands accommodates a site, which is a traditional monopole, much taller. So those are some of the options I'll put in front of you as time comes, and some of it I'm going to ask the applicant for a little more information. Code compliance in accordance with the, with the village's wireless ordinance, we would have some questions and clarifications on some of the drawing aspects. I think Dennis notes that the setbacks are generally in accordance. It's a relatively large property, over seven acres, kind of a curvy shape, as you could see here, constrains of working with setbacks, with fall zones and other code requirements. There's also some wetlands and water bodies here to ask about as well. So visual assessment, the RF signal and need, and then the alternate site analysis. So there is an alternate site analysis that was put together. I'm definitely going to have questions on that, naming where some of those sites are, the six or seven property owners that they contacted, wanting a better understanding of that. So the site, I think, has a lot of merit in that it is close to the New York State thruway and Woodbury Common. It is close to where the relief is needed in Verizon's local network, but there's certainly some more questions that I'll need to ask. Hope to get that done next week, to put out a supplemental info and clarification request. Maybe some general comments I could throw out tonight, and maybe we, we'll talk about any kind of referrals that are needed. Question that I did have, and perhaps the board or consultants would know a little bit about it, in visiting the site, driving off of Abrams Road back to where the proposed compound is, there is an access gate to the right-of-way of the thruway, and I was just curious if the thruway's been contacted about that. It doesn't look like an active access gate, but I'm just curious if that's used for any purpose at all.
You know, not to my knowledge. I do know that, or I did see that the thruway, basically times parks and trucks nearby, but not to my knowledge that the landlord using that access gate to access toward the thruway or anything.
Okay.
There is a crash gate further up Estrada? Estrada.
Yeah.
Abrams.
Abrams, sure.
That I know that Woodbury Police and Fire have access to, they have keys for it. It may be, but it may be, I think, just beneficial on our referral, just to check with the thruway.
This actually looks like an older gate, but.
I think years ago.
At one point in time.
Robin, you might remember, when Judge Levinson, when his practice was there, I think they gave the ambulance and maybe some of the tow trucks that have access onto the thruway, like an emergency access. I, don't quote me on that, but I think that's what it was years ago.
Got it.
But I do know there's definitely a newer crash gate that's used, about a mile up the road.
Correct.
Because they actually, they actually clear that when it snows and that, they actually, yeah, they actually make sure that's all cleared out and stuff like that, so I could definitely tell you that one's used.
Got it, okay, alright, well, that's, it's kind of a, just one of the many, but it's maybe a little more of a minor comment with all this. Any word back from the State Historic Preservation Office? I know those are the filings that are always made.
I believe we have it from our board, whether it was submitted in the beginning, but regardless, next session I'll make sure we get the response.
Okay, yeah, appreciate it. Some of the things that were submitted, the tower at the site, as expected, would not require any special lighting or strobing in terms of the FAA, that's always a question with tall structures, but at a hundred-and-ten feet, that would not require it. There's a proposed.
There wasn't FAA opinion letter submitted with this application.
Right, yeah, right. There is a generator proposed at the ground, propane fueled, not diesel fueled, along with an equipment compound approximately twenty-five-hundred square feet. So we're drafting a tech memo, but there's a few key questions that have to get answered. And I think one of them is the balance of co-location. Again, a hundred-and-ten feet isn't very high above the tree line, so what about other carriers that might be interested also in the area? If Verizon's having an issue, it's likely that AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or Sprint are or will experience a similar issue. And the idea about a hundred-and-ten feet accommodating co-location is really a key question. If something is approved and built after the due diligence is done, after all the extensive reviews are done, and then another applicant comes in a year later and says, oh, it's too low, we can't go below Verizon. Those are some of the questions we'll try to ask about. We can't always predict every need for every carrier, for every application, but we will bring that forth also for you guys to consider.
Can you just address that real quickly? Of course, the reason for the close heights, the town code encourages a limited potential as maximum height, but we can build the towers to be extendable if there's a need, and if another carrier that comes along, we can always make these towers extendable.
Yeah, interesting, that's a good point. Your structural engineer has certified that the design will be done to accommodate co-location. Yes, extendable towers are recommendations that we've made in the past, you know, recognizing that, yeah, below a certain height, we might be below a tree line, might not be viable. So we'll be asking the applicant for some additional information, and I think, once we get responses back, we'll be able to finalize and have a good discussion with that.
Either Michael or Kelly, when does, I know on the new FCC regulations, there's a shot clock that starts.
Right, that's after the receipt of a complete application. I act, the thirty days that you have to notify them actually expired on July fourth. I reached out to Snyder and Snyder purposely not on the fourth, because nobody wants their holiday ruined, but I did reach out to them on the fifth, and I let them know that, I didn't reach out to them on the holiday, but the application was not complete at this time. So that that hasn't started yet. But I think that Mike's tech memo in the next, you know, week or two, that he's saying, we'll list out whatever else is missing for your consideration.
Okay.
But that does lead me into another point, if I can. So I'm going to skip you, Dennis, if that's okay. So for this application, things that I think that you can do tonight, the applicant asked for you to schedule a public hearing, and I don't think you can schedule a public hearing, and the reason I say that is because you have yet to, under SECA, make your notice of intent-to-be lead agency. That is a thirty-day timeframe, that thirty days will not have expired by that public hearing. So I think you can make the motion to notice, declare your intent-to-be lead agency, you can type the action as unlisted. We'll then prepare for you, as we typically do, our Part II EAF, and we sent a copy to the applicant as well, so they have that. This does require two-thirty-nine referral, I think it was sent out. I don't think you've received anything back yet, but.
Signed, say it.
Just didn't sign one. Yeah, okay, so that's, that was what I had, but I wanted to go from there, complete application, to public hearing, not ready yet, but I think that they'll have the information that we're, that is being requested, it will be submitted definitely within that timeframe, and then you'll be able to set the public hearing.
And just to let the applicant know and the board, I did speak to Maria about this, the requirements for advertising this are more difficult or more time-consuming than they are for our normal public hearings. And so she is advised that she couldn't possibly list it for the next one, and when you decide you want to list it, if we're at one meeting, we don't want to list it for two weeks out, we're going to need to have some kind of, maybe a month, or if there's a three-week span, we might be able to do it. This time, it's unfortunate she's on vacation this week, so we couldn't do it this week, but if there's only two weeks between meetings, we'll have to do it for a month out. If there's three weeks, I'll check with her, we may be able to do it for the following meeting as far as scheduling the public hearing.
So would the reason we went to the twenty-first, that would be beyond thirty days from today or tomorrow, and I'm just questioning for a coordinated review, is there another APC that would be involved in this?
Is right now the DEC for the trees and potentially the Army Corps, depending on if there's any disturbance on the wetlands? So you said that there wasn't, but then you said we're going to really try, so I think it would be better if there wasn't?
Yeah, no, the plan right now is not for disturbance within the wetlands. We specifically made sure that the site itself and the whole fenced area is outside not only the wetland, but the wetland pocket. The only disturbance, potential disturbance within the wetland pocket is the trenching from an existing utility pole on site here to the site. Had the discussion with the town attorney, determined that there is a disturbance, we potentially need a wetland permit, and trying to work out how we can do that with the condition of approval, and we will be going to inspect it, but right now the only concern is trenching on a mannequin lawn that happens to do with the pole.
Then not Army Corps. I had not Army Corps before, but then I heard during your thing that maybe we would, so if there's definitely not, then we won't notify them.
That's, if the, if the wetlands just regulated by Army Corps, you have to be in the wetland, they don't have the buffer, okay? But if it's a DEC wetland, there is a buffer as well. It's not a DEC regulated wetland, I'm not sure.
Based on our, our weather consultant, the wetland on the side that we would be putting the buffer to is a local one. I can work with you to confirm that.
Okay, so that.
Probably ask about that, too.
Yeah, that would be Army Corps and that would be local, okay.
So would that go to Army Corps?
Well, if it's not disturb, when I say Army Corps, it's Army Corps wetland, regulated wetland, but it's not, if you, they don't have a buffer requirement there, so you wouldn't have to get a permit if you're not disturbing it locally. We have an adjacent area requirement, so you would have to get a local permit for wetlands.
And just to clarify, too, that permit comes from the building department, not from the county?
Well, the actual permit comes from billing department. I think the review authority is the planning board, and generally, if, if you're satisfied, you simply require that they get a wetlands permit from the billing department. That's what we've done in previous applications. Freshwater wetlands.
Oh, then they need an application.
They need an application.
Okay, so was that, I don't think that was submitted. So then you need to submit a freshwater wetlands application permit, which also requires a public hearing? So once that's submitted, we'll put it so that the public hearings are held at the same time, and I will confirm with Dennis prior to sending out the notice, just to make sure solidly that it does not also need to go to the Army Corps, but it sounds like it does not, and it's just the DEC, but I will confirm.
Okay.
In case.
And the two-thirty-nine, you want, you'll follow up or not follow up?
I will follow up with Maria, just to make sure all of our bases are covered.
Okay. Do we need to notify the thruway authority and that? Yes, right?
No, there's no disturbance, they're not doing anything over there, not the gates, no, none unless they decide to, you know, pave the gates area or anything like that.
I actually have a question, too. Yeah, no disturbance, nothing in or towards the right-of-way of the thruway authority, but do you normally notice them at all? Is no requirement?
Normally, we just go leave it up to the sheriff.
Yeah, they're going to get noticed in the public hearing, they're adjacent property owners, so they'll, they'll get a notice.
That's fine. I have a little question, so in order for the, since the application was being completed, we'll need to respond to Mr. So's comments, and now I go to the application.
Yes.
If we were to get that in, if we receive So's comment then on next week, we could directly have all of this in submitted by August seventh date, if we could appear before you then to consider the potential scheduling of the public hearing that day for sometime in September. Otherwise, we wait until August twenty-first, which is in your problem, I can be there on occasion, but regardless, if we can come back, if I get everything in, I can come back to the seventh, and we can talk about the potential scheduling in September, otherwise we, so we, we, we're not necessarily.
I think we need to see when you actually submit everything, because at meetings, applicants, as this board knows, they generally say, we're going to get it all in tomorrow, and that usually doesn't happen, and it's not saying you won't get it in tomorrow, you might, but let us see when this stuff actually comes in, to see when you can be placed on an agenda by the chairman. I don't want to commit the board to anything tonight, but right now it would be better.
If it's just placing it on an agenda for consideration of a public hearing, that's within the discretion of the chairman, to put it on the agenda. If you wanted to say a hearing, that's not within discretion, that's by the board. So the, the hearing has to be set at a meeting, and we've got a number, a number of items that are going to be on that, but if it's just for setting the hearing, you think everything's in, and we think it's appropriate to do so, the chair, chairman can set, can put it on the agenda.
That's what I would ask potentially, and I may come back August seventh and you say, no, we're not ready to go, right? But potentially I get everything in, you know, I'd like to see everything in, then see if we can potentially schedule it in the first meeting, happen to September.
I guess, I think it's, you know, like, it all depends on, you know, everybody gets their memos back and forth and the applications, and, you know, typically, we like to see things two weeks prior to the meeting. It gives the consultant.